All right. The date is June 26, 2018, and the time is 3:11. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. We'll have a board roll call, starting from my far right.
Sandy Kravitz.
Allison Beckham.
Pam Kirby.
Kim Hartman.
Barbara Pearlberg. All board members are present, and we do have a quorum. Our first agenda item is the public hearing on proposed fiscal year 2018-19 expenditure budget and truth in taxation notice pursuant to ARS Section 38, 431.02 and ARS Section 15, 905 DE. Notice was given to the members of the governing board and the general public that the governing board will conduct a public hearing at this regular meeting regarding the truth in taxation notice and adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 expenditure budget. Dr. Krikard or Dr. Virgil, do you have any comments or discussion prior to the public comments?
Yes, President Pearlberg. Thank you very much. Dr. Virgil has a brief presentation, and I would ask, if I may, if we let him go through it, because I think questions that may come up could be answered during the course of his presentation. Thank you.
Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Krikard, Sandra, good afternoon. So, truth in taxation public hearing had some questions on the truth in taxation and the notice that went out, and so wanted to put this together and walk you through how we got to where we're at and where we might want to go. So, the increase, and it's talked as a tax increase, is for adjacent ways levying. Adjacent Ways, ARS 15995 controls it. It's for improvement of public ways adjacent to school property and ingress and egress of fire equipment and buses. And these funds are accounted for in our Fund 620. So, that's what it's for. This is the truth in taxation hearing notice that was out and published in the paper, and there's an error on this form, but the error is to the, to our, I don't want to say our advantage, but is to the taxpayers' advantage as far as what to expect. The figure of $4 million is correct. The primary property taxes on the $100,000 home at $7.95, and that's not tax rate, that's how much a homeowner would pay for one year of taxes, would be $7.95. And without the tax increase, the total taxes that would be owed is, this says zero, the correct number should be .41. And let me walk you through where that is. Before I walk you through that, why is that, and I don't want to say okay, but not to a disadvantage to the taxpayers? The intent of that sentence, or those two sentences, is to show taxpayer the relatively, the relative increase. So, it would, when you read that, you would say, okay, I would start paying $7.95 more cents, more than I would have. Had the figure, had we got the right figure in there at .41, then you would say, okay, I will pay $7.54 more than I would have. So, the $7.95 is a higher number. The difference between $7.95 and zero is a greater number than $7.95 to .41. So, a taxpayer would look at this, and then what they would actually experience would be less of an increase than is exhibited here. Let me show you where that is. On the truth in taxation worksheet, and of course, the worksheets, the font is too small, so I don't have the entire worksheet here. It's on page 19 in your packet, and it is the worksheet that follows the summary. And the, this is the sheet that we originally went with, and line number two, the deduction for discontinued programs, you notice there it says $7,603,300. And then, if you look at line B2, it says zero, and that's where the zero came from on the hearing notice. And then line C2 is the $7.95, that's where that figure came from on the hearing notice. What that sheet should reflect is here, and you see that line two is $7,382,169, and that is the amount of our DSEG, which was pulled out and put on the secondary tax rate. What was still, what should have remained in there was the $221,131, and that is for the dropout prevention program, which gets added to this but is not considered a new tax. It's part of the base. So, then you see line B2 shows the .41, and line C2 still remains the $7.95. So, we've prepared a new sheet that reflects these numbers, and at this time, you know, while we're at this item of adopting a budget, of course, we can make any changes that we want to the budget, and we would substitute this sheet with the correct numbers in for the sheet that's got the erroneous number in. So, adjacent ways, so how does it work? So, it says $4 million. Here's a history of what we've done on adjacent ways, on the truth in taxation notices, and these are all for adjacent ways going back five years. And you can see in 2014, we had an expenditure of $2 million. That was the expenditure budget in the far right column. We started that year, we had a beginning balance of $120,000, and so, the county sets the tax rate to meet the $2 million budget that we put in our budget. And as you, it's not an exact science they set the tax rate, the taxes come in, they never, they seldom equal exactly what it is. So, they brought in $2,135,000. We spent $270,000, so we had an ending balance of $1,985,000. So, the ending balance for 2014 becomes the beginning balance for 2015. In 2015, we had an expenditure budget for $3 million. That doesn't mean that the county went out and collected $3 million of taxes from the taxpayers. What they did, they collected enough tax to make our budget $3 million. So, we had 1.9 million as a beginning balance, so the county set the tax rate to bring in $971,000 of revenue, and you can see, $971,000 plus $1,985 puts you right at $3 million, so that you have the $3 million budget that you put in your budget. So, you can see where we spent $261, and we had an ending balance of $2,695. So, '16, then we went to an expenditure budget of $4 million. Same thing, beginning balance of $2,695, the county sets the tax rate to bring in enough money to have the $4 million. So, they set the tax rate to bring in $1,346. Same thing goes on, we spend $1,235, we have an ending balance of $2,806. '17 rolls around, we have another $4 million of expenditure budget. Beginning balance is $2,806,000. The county sets the tax rate that brings in $1,198,000. The two of those added together are the approximation of $4 million. And so, we spend $236,000, we have an ending balance of $3,768,000. '18, we do the same thing, we have an expenditure budget of $4 million, we have a beginning balance of $3,700,000. The revenue, and I have an asterisk there because for '18, we're still, we're still receiving taxes. We haven't received all of it yet, but the county, we're on track, and they would have set the tax rate so that it would raise $231,000, so that when you add that to the $3,707, it would give you the $4 million expenditure budget that you planned for. And then, so for going into '19, you can see that we have an estimated expenditure, excuse me, of 1.3 million for this year, which will leave us have an estimated ending balance of $2,600,000. That will become the beginning balance for 2019, so you would anticipate then that the county would set the tax rate to raise $1,382, so that those two added together give you the $4 million that you budget for. And then you can see the expenditures that are projected for 2019 and the ending balance at the end of 2019. So, you can see, with the exception of 2014, when our beginning balance was near zero, relatively speaking, that in no year was the levy actually for the budget amount. The levy is for the difference between the beginning balance and the budget amount. Think of it as filling your cup, so that every year you fill your cup, so that you start off with the budget amount that you planned for. And then, if you spend less than that, then what's remaining carries forward, and then you set the levy for the next year. So, if you had, and of course, how does that work? Well, a couple of different examples. If you set the expenditure budget at zero, then of course, the county wouldn't set a tax rate for anything, and then you would just have the budget balance carry forward that you can spend. Even though you set the budget for zero, you can still spend the money because you have the cash. So, for example, we look at 2018, we have a beginning balance of 3.7 million. Had we set the budget at zero, we would still have the $3,700,000 that we could have spent. So, another example, let's say that you had set the budget for $3 million, but your cash is $3,700,000. Because you set a budget, you would have to go through the truth in taxation hearing, and they would figure out the taxes, just like they did on this one, is if you were going to collect the entire $4 million, they would, you would compute that tax rate as though you were going to collect the full $3 million. But when the county sees that you have 3.7 million, they're not going to set a tax because you've already got the $3 million that you budgeted, so they wouldn't set a tax even though you'd gone through the motions of doing a truth in taxation hearing and set a rate. So, that's how that works. So, that, then, when you look at that and you go back and compare it, so, we're projecting, based on our projections, we're looking at 1.3 million. Instead, so even though the truth in taxation hearing said $4 million, in reality, we've already got the 3.7, or the, what did I say? The, let me go back. The 2.6, 2.6 million for 2019, we estimate our beginning balance. So, when you go back to here and you see the $4 million, we already have $2,600,000 in the bank. So, the tax rate is only going to be set to bring in 1.4 million, so that dollar amount is going to be significantly less, it will be less than half of that $7.95. So, wanted to walk you through that, so that you could see the method and how they do that, and what we're really looking at as far as the impact of that. Other questions that came up are the projects. What have we done? I gave you the definition of adjacent ways and the statute that guides that, and here's just a brief listing of the type of projects that get done with, using the adjacent ways fund. And you can see there what we've got, and for 2019, Mr. Rayler has a list of projects that he's planning for going into next year, and of course, also, we have a consultant coming on, and that list may or may not be revised as to where we're going forward on that. So, hopefully, that clarifies some of the, I think there was some confusion. I know when they passed the truth in taxation law a number of years ago, the organization that lobbied for that specifically was the Arizona Tax Research Association, ATRA, and they were influential, and still are to some degree with the legislature, and they pushed for that language that treats it like a new tax every year. Whether or not you had it last year, they treat it like it's a brand-new tax, and so, it reads as though it's a new tax, even though you already had it built into your tax rate. We don't do that, if you think of when you do an override, and you're going to continue an override, you generally don't go out and say, hey, it's a new tax, it's a continuation of a tax for an override, and we're wanting to continue it. With the truth in taxation and the adjacent ways, even though you had it, and even though you're continuing it, by law, you have to state it as a new tax, and so, that sometimes causes a little confusion, that it's something new that you're just doing. But as you could see from the history, this will be the, 2019 will be the fourth year in a row we've had it set at $4 million, and I just went back to 2014, that we've had that in our budget. So, questions, comments?
Board Member Kirby.
Thank you, Dr. Virgil. Just one quick question. At the last board meeting, you presented the primary tax rate and secondary tax rates, and because DSEG is moving to secondary, primary was going down, secondary was coming up a little bit, but overall, it was a decrease in the rate when the two are combined together. Was this part of that, or is this in addition to that?
This is part of that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Board Member Kravitz.
Could you go back to the slide where it showed the truth in taxation and $7.95? Okay, that slide. Who writes that language? Is that by the county?
Well, now, it's given to us when we get our forms from the Arizona Auditor General and the Arizona Department of Education jointly issue the forms for our budget.
Okay.
And so, they do it, but this language was specified back in the legislation that put the truth in taxation notice into law, and that, the, I don't know who specifically wrote it, but I know the organization was the Arizona Tax Research Association, which was very influential on getting this type, getting this language put in.
Okay, but we're not collecting $4 million, is what, is that correct? You said we're collecting the difference, so it is not actually going to be $7.95 per $100,000?
That's correct.
So, when that says truth in taxation, I see that, and I'm saying, that's not even written truthfully.
Well.
Am I understanding that correctly?
One could make that argument.
I'm not a numbers person, so I'm just thinking.
The reason they do that, and not, not that I want to defend ATRA, but the reason they do that is because they don't know where you're going to end up. So, they're taking the approach that you're going to go out and levy for the entire $4 million, that you're going to have a zero cash balance when the county sets the rate. So, they're looking at worst-case scenario, and that's what you need to tell your taxpayers, because, as we were kidding earlier, I've never had the phone ring and somebody say, hey, my taxes went down, thanks.
Right.
I'd never get that call.
And that kind of goes to my point.
But when they go up, the phone rings off the hook. So, when you tell people, it's going to be this level, and it's lower, nobody gets mad at you. But when you tell them it's going to be this level, and it comes in higher, then they're upset with you. So, this, by setting at the maximum, nobody's going to be mad when it comes in less, and this is the most that it could come in at.
Yeah, but unfortunately, I don't know that people necessarily pay attention when the bill comes in and compare it with what was set out. So, I just want to be clear that we're not collecting for the total $4 million, and it will be less than $7.95 per $100,000.
Yes, it will be. It will be significantly less because we're only going to be collecting 1.3, which is less than half. That would be approximately 30, a little over 30 percent. So, 30 percent of that $7.95 would be 240, 250, somewhere in that range.
Okay, so that's what the headline should be.
So, it would be significantly less.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. So, that moves us on to our agenda item 4A, public comments. Just a reminder, comments at this time are limited to the truth in taxation notice and proposed budget. We will have a regular meeting comment later in our meeting. I believe I just have one card, Sandra, is that correct? Mike Peabody.
Madam President, governing board members, Dr. Krikard, Sandra, Cabinet. Thank you, Dr. Virgil, for that riveting, riveting speech on truth in taxation. I honestly can say I'm not a numbers person, I kind of followed along. It was brought to my attention to mention the $3.5 million deficit we had from last year, to make sure we are not going in that direction again. I believe you corrected that, or I don't remember exactly who corrected it. Also, as a taxpayer, talking to a lot of taxpayers, I know that many of us are very willing to increase our taxes, and this has to go on to state level, I understand, increase our taxes to better fund education and public education. In Scottsdale, we do have the problem where they have to say, well, we don't know if it's going to be spent properly, as we experienced last year. We have a carryover that we can use if we don't get higher, higher money revenues coming in, and I believe those 9.6 million was forecasted, if I'm not mistaken? Approximately $9.6 million. Where we're giving our classified staff a small raise this coming year, about 2% to 4%, I believe was what was talked about, 4%. We could possibly give them more, and I know that these are the people right now who are preparing nutritional meals, who are getting the vendor prices, who are cutting the grass, who are making sure that school is going to be ready this coming year, the plumbers, the builders, everybody in building services, everybody nutritional services, that are making sure our kids will be better off in the coming time. I think that for the budget, it is fluid, as I understand it. You can request of the Cabinet of Dr. Krikard to increase their pay. They deserve it, they haven't had a pay raise in a long time. We know the teachers are getting more with the Red for Ed movement, but the classified staff, sorry, certified, classified staff, I sometimes mix that up, really needs the attention that they have not gotten. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments? No cards turned in? Any other questions or comments at this point? All right. All right, so the public hearing then is now adjourned, and I call to order our governing board. Oh, we do need, it does have to be an action item, okay. I didn't state that. Okay, sorry. Okay, so I will make a motion that we adjourn our public hearing, and, do I have a second? Second. Thank you. Board Member Hartman, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, and I will call to order our governing board's regular meeting and start with the agenda item 7, approval of agenda. I'm going to note that tonight, we're going to pull action item 13B and table the approval of upgrade and expansion of video security system Phase 2 to, I believe, a next meeting in August, I believe. So, we're going to pull that item. Do we have any other requests? Board Member Beckham.
Yes, could you please pull 12K, the designation of sole source for various vendors?
Consent item 12K. Okay. All righty. Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Board Member Kravitz. 12G approval of the purchase of employee and volunteer screening services. Okay. All right, so those two consent items will be pulled. Any additional? Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Hartman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. And that brings us to agenda item 8, action item A, adoption of a proposed fiscal year 2018-19 expenditure budget. Okay. So, do we have any additional questions or comments, or are we ready for a motion on this action item?
Board Member Kirby. Thank you. Before we move forward on this, I just want to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Virgil. I believe this is his last meeting with us, and we have appreciated your support and help in Scottsdale Unified, so I just wanted to take the opportunity at this time.
Dr. Krikard, did you have a comment, or no?
I was waiting for superintendent's comments. I didn't know I could jump in anytime.
No, no, that's, that's fine. I thought you had something on this action item, but that's all right. Okay, so, at this time, do I have a motion?
So moved. I move to adopt the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 expenditure budget as presented.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby. A second?
A second.
Thank you, Board Member Hartman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. And I now call upon Dr. Krikard to present superintendent's comments.
Thank you, President Pearlberg, members of the board. Real briefly, tonight, we, because this is a summer meeting, we don't have the usual student awards and acknowledgements, but there are three people that I would like to acknowledge for their service to the district tonight. Dr. Virgil, as mentioned, this is his last night, he was interim CFO. Dr. Johnson, who has retired, starting on Sunday, and Dr. Chestnut, who's position was abolished, he is staying on in the district, but the three of them have provided superior service to, to the district during this interim period of time, during the time that I've been here, and I want to appreciate, show my appreciation for the three of you and what you have done, helping me as, as a brand-new superintendent, learning the ropes and solving problems for me and for the district as a whole. Thank you for, three of you, for your service. And then, in addition, I would also like to acknowledge Erin Helm, who is our public information officer, who is also leaving and moving to a district closer to her home, and the work that she has done as well in, in providing letters to the community, interviews of the superintendent, and generally, marketing our district, but especially, again, in the last five weeks that I've been here, the work that Erin has, has done to make me look good is much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Okay. We'll move on to agenda item 10, information discussion item 10A, first read of revisions to policy GBEAA, staff conflict of interest. Is Ms. Siegel presenting, or who's presenting this item? That's what, I thought, yeah, I thought it was Susan Siegel, wasn't it? Is she back there?
She's stepped out.
Oh, all right. She's missed her cue. She didn't think we'd move this fast. Let's see here, I'll make sure I'm squared away. I am correct, right, is Susan presenting? Okay. Oh, she's, she's totally missing. Wow. Where's her understudy? Well, I'm not sure, do we have any public comment cards? Goodness, we're just going to cruise through this meeting. Goodness, we're just going to cruise through this meeting. We could, we have to discuss those two items. I hate to get started on, okay. All right. Well, at this time, I'll note, if everyone's good, I'll note that Agenda Item 11, public comments, we don't have any comment cards at this time. So we will be passing over that. What's that? Oh. Right, right. Exactly, exactly. Okay. So this time, if we have no public comment, we'll move on to that and move on to Agenda Item 12, obviously possibly coming back to 10 there. Our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Obviously, we have pulled Items 12G and 12K.
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Hartman, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. And, yes, Dr. Kreekard?
Thank you. Now that we've passed the consent agenda, including the Personnel Action Items, there are some people that are here that I would like to acknowledge who are new employees or transfers into significant positions. But before I do that, I wanted to point out that we have added an element to our Personnel Agenda Item. At the end of that paperwork for those pages for the Personnel Action Items are the lists of employees who are new to our, in the administrative and supervisory ranks, new to our district, as well as those who have been transferred into positions, giving a little bit of their work history and their post-secondary work, in an attempt to not only provide information to you as board members, but also to provide information to the audience and our public to be able to see the quality of the new employees and in some cases, and the transfers of existing employees that we have here in this district and the backgrounds that they bring to us. And we're very proud of that. And we want our public to know that we are always searching out and recruiting and, in some cases, retaining the best talent that we can find. And so we're very proud of that. And with that, the people who are on the agenda that I believe are here tonight, first of all, that I would like to recognize. We have, at the Assistant Superintendent level, who is not here, is Dr. Jed Bowman, who will be Assistant Superintendent for HR. He may be watching on streaming. Hope so. Hi Jed, hope to see you soon. Mr. Jeff Gad, who will be our new interim CFO to follow our old interim CFO. And as Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education, I would like to introduce Dr. E.B. Hoggigot, who comes to us from Paradise Valley Unified School District and will be starting on July 1. Dr. Hoggigot. I would also like to, we have some principals here. We have Mr. Carlos Arlong, who is coming here from Isaac District in Central Phoenix, and he will be principal at Yavapai. And I think that, do we have any of the other assistant principals, new hires? Oh, Amy. So as interim principal at Coronado High School, Amy Palatutti. And that was in the transfers. Also, as a transfer from Student Services Executive Director to Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, Dr. Melissa Sakos. Okay. So are there others who are on the list that are here? Not that I see. So anyway, welcome to our new employees. Congratulations to our employees who are transferring into bigger and more exciting tasks. And we look forward to July 1, when everybody will be on board. Thank you.
Terrific. Okay, so we will be coming back soon as Ms. Siegel returns to Agenda Item 10, but I think we can certainly go ahead and discuss the consent agenda items that were pulled. Our first one, 12G, approval of the purchase of employee and volunteer screening services. Ms. Kravitz?
I had just a quick question. In the information on the agenda, it says the Government Board has previously approved the use of, but if the company is through the SAVE contract, which we were part with the Peoria School District. Peoria has not renewed their contract. Do we know why Peoria did not renew their contract? And is that something that is relevant? And also, does this company do, it said, let's see, criminal county surname and driving record checked. Does it check? I don't want to make an assumption, but do they check? Do an internet search, social media search of any type? That was for Dr. Chestnut, because he's listed on the agenda.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes, I'm sorry to say that I don't know the answer. I was listed because there was no one else left to list.
Oh.
I would be happy to get that information, get it back to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so that leaves it open if we want to have a motion to still go ahead and approve, or do we have additional questions? I'm sorry, Board Member Kirby?
So, thank you. That was the question I was going to ask, is if we... Are there any negative repercussions if we don't approve this tonight and we hold it until we get answers to those questions?
We have a vendor through the end of this month?
Which ends very soon.
Yeah, Thursday.
We do have a meeting Thursday.
If we could get that information.
That's true, we could add this.
We could add that.
Okay.
Special meeting on Thursday.
If that's, I'd like to request that we...
Okay.
Add it Thursday. Thank you.
So we will table that item until this Thursday's meeting. And that brings us to Consent Item 12K, and that is the approval of the designation of sole source for various vendors. Board Member Beckham?
Okay, thank you. This question will be for Dr. Doug Virgil. So I don't know if you want to come up. This is to approve the designation of sole source of vendors as listed below. There's two vendors, the College Board and the International Baccalaureate Organization. And I would like to have you provide us the dollar amounts of these two contracts and then just affirm that the funds are in the budget and are available, or if it is additional funds that we will be finding for next year.
Madam President, Governing Board members. Ms. Beckham, yes, the College Board, the dollar amount that we spent for this year was $185,000. We expect to send about the same, so we're planning for $200,000 expenditure on that. And that was used, as far as what it was for, it was used to purchase a combination of testing materials for gifted students, E.L.A. materials for sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, and AP exams. And who uses that as educational services and at the school sites? And those funds are OO1, which M&amp;O, and auxiliary funds and tax credit funds that are used for that, and some capital funds. And then for the IB program, the estimated expenditures for this year for that is $60,000. However, the end user, the end user is Desert Mountain High School. The end user stated that we need to plan for up to $100,000, and that's for a membership and exam fees. And those are paid also with M&amp;O and extracurricular and auxiliary funds. And the departments and the schools, they have the budget capacity for those expenditures.
Thank you very much. Before I approve something, I'd like to note the dollar amounts. So that's why I asked. So I'm ready, unless there's more discussion, to move, make a motion.
I don't see any additional questions or comments. If you're ready to make a motion, that would be great.
I make a motion to approve the designation of sole source for various vendors as presented.
Thank you, Board Member Beckham, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. All right, so we will continue on then. Let's see. Yeah, I'm just thinking, I'm not sure how far Susan is out. I don't want to make her wait, since she is on the clock. But we'll go ahead and start our next Agenda Item 13A, approval of revision of 2018-19 district calendar. Yeah, I think this one might not be too quick, but we'll give it a try. Dr. Kreekard?
Well, we'll see if I do any better today. So, thank you, President Perleberg, members of the Board. At the last meeting, we discussed two calendars and decided to put off the discussion on the 2019-2020 calendar and answer some questions on the 2018-2019 calendar. So at this point, we, the administrators are recommending proposed calendar version one, from what we showed last time, to do a couple of things. One is not change the start date of the school year. Maintain 180 school days for students and 186 workdays for teachers. So the calendar, as it exists right now, has school getting out the week after Memorial Day. So in order to alleviate those three days, we are recommending that the professional development days of October 15th, which is the Monday after fall break, November 21st, which was a day of no school, day before Thanksgiving, to have school on that day, that's Wednesday, and January 7th, which is the professional development day following the winter break. That would change high school graduation from May 30th to May 23rd, change high school final exams from May 28th and 30th to May 21st to the 23rd, and change the last day of classes from May 30th to May 24th. It would shorten Thanksgiving recess by one day, and it would delete the two professional days, as mentioned, as well as one professional development day at the very end, with recapturing Friday, August 3rd as a teacher workday. Then the teachers would only need, it would be four days at the beginning of the calendar and two days at the end, and they would finish on May 30th, May 28th and 29th, actually. So with that, that's the proposal and the recommendation and willing to answer more questions regarding this calendar.
Hi, Board Member Kirby?
Thank you, Dr. Kreekard. I have a few questions. At the last meeting, I was advocating for the use of instructional minutes. And if you could just share the conversations we had around why that was not a viable alternative?
Okay. As you know, we were allowed to use instructional minutes to qualify for completing the school year, to make up for the days that were missed during the teacher walkout this current year. So our questions of the Arizona Department of Education Financial Unit, that is the one who determines our average daily membership pay and for our annual budget. They said that was an anomaly, that was an emergency situation. And so when we asked, can we use instructional minutes for the next year? We were told no by some people in that unit. We were told yes, we think so, by other members of that unit. And we were told, I don't know, by still others. They have a new, and Carol, if you'd please help me out if I misspeak, they have a new software program and the calculator that which determines our average daily membership for the budget is based on 180 days. They don't know whether that could be reprogrammed or how that would do. In the end, our recommendation is based on the fact that, number one, we would be at risk that the first people that we talked to were right. Or if we went to instructional minutes, we may be seen as an outlier and raise issues, again, about what we were doing. And anytime we come in with less than 180 days, I think there would be questions about what we were doing, even though it may be legal. And even though we know that whether it be 179 or 178 or whichever, we would make sure that those are full days, taking care of the instruction as is our charge. But I believe personally that we just don't need to go there. We will take probably a little bit of heat for changing the calendar at the last minute. But we have been hearing from community members that going after Memorial Day is something that they would like to see changed.
Okay, thank you. So another question I have is with respect to the days that we're adding back as student days. So for example, the day before Thanksgiving, which was initially a holiday. If employees already have vacation plans for that day, how will we handle those situations? Will they just take general leave?
Yes.
Okay. And then I want to confirm that for seniors, the last day of school, May 24th, is a Friday and is the day after graduation on Thursday night. Is that true or not? That's what I'm...
That is true. When we have had this kind of schedule in years past that I know of, seniors figured it out, and they didn't come to school on the last day. We don't want to advertise that, because that may look like it's less than for K-12. But in essence, it truly is the last day for K through 11.
So are we in the ADM calculator? For seniors, is May 24th a school day for seniors?
Yes.
But realistically, what I'm hearing you say is that we don't anticipate that we will have any seniors. And it almost sounds like there's really not much we can do about it.
Right.
Board Member Beckham?
Not that I know what every school does after graduation, but I believe it is a tradition. Isn't it at Desert Mountain? That after graduation, they all get on a bus and go to Disneyland that night? So all of Desert Mountain. Will they have to change that trip because of that? I mean, if they're just...
Each school has their own version of Project Grad, I know that, from recent experience.
They're the ones who actually go out of town, though. I mean...
Where they physically would not be here.
Even after an all-night Project Grad, they're not coming that morning.
And I will add, if I'm correct, the Board approves all... I don't know if we would approve Project Grad trips, because it's after graduation, but it's not... But is it a district, or is it a PTA thing?
It's a, yeah, parent group. Board Member Hartman? Board Member Hartman?
So, thank you. I have a question, but I guess I want clarification, would appreciate a clarification on that last day for seniors on, what is that, May twenty-fourth? So is that a problem with the hundred and eighty-day calculation? Are we down?
They would be.
Or do we have a spare day, so if they're not there?
No, we do not have a spare day. So, yes, that would be a day of higher absence, yes. Not that it is the last day of school is throughout the district. At any rate, I would guess at other grade levels, not so much at high school if they're taking exams, but there's a history of people leaving early.
Can we be in a situation where we have a required day and we know the students won't, seniors, twelfth graders won't be there?
Yeah. We wouldn't be discouraging them from coming to school. We're trying to be realistic, but we would certainly encourage them to come to school.
So are you going to bring the all-nighter buses directly to school?
No.
After Project Grad? We do have control of the situation, although can't see it being.
Board Member Kravitz?
Early release days, or I should ask, on early release days, we get credit for a full day still or no? So for seniors, if we wanted to give them an extra day, could we condense finals into two days instead of three?
It still gives us a hundred and seventy-nine days. If we finish on graduation day on the Thursday, a hundred and seventy-nine...
Oh, I thought, because if it's an early release day, I was thinking if we, it is counted as a day, so by condensing finals...
But instructional minutes are not counted as the full day.
So there's no benefit there? Okay, just trying.
So wait, just, we still have a school day, it's still a hundred and eighty school days, we'll have high absentee of our seniors on that day, but they have enough instructional minutes as seniors, or any, all our students would have enough instructional minutes. Because I equate to, I mean, eighth grade has a ditch day. I mean, it's, that's what I'm kind of equating it to, is, it's a school day, but...
It's a school day. It would count for your instructional minutes as long as you did not say you could not come, you did not leave it open for seniors to be able to...
And correct me if I'm wrong, it, I mean, our district has done this in the past. I mean, one of my points on this calendar is it is a step backwards for us, because I know in the past, we've had school after graduation, we have a lot of families who dislike that. So I know this isn't new necessarily, but in my mind, it is a step backwards for our calendar. There's always pros and cons with each calendar decision, but it is a little bit of a step backwards for this year.
Right. So you weigh those pros and cons, you weigh those, getting out, how important is getting out to, before Memorial Day for our community, and you five have probably heard more than we have on this. But I also know that we will hear more about next year's calendar during that year, once school starts and people see, start paying attention to that calendar, we will hear more. So we, so it's weighing that versus that last day for, just for seniors, not for the rest of the students, but just for the one class.
And I would agree with that. I think there's going to be a lot of parents that, whichever calendar, if we stuck with this one or go with this one, they're going to go, wait a minute, what's happening? And this final day is going to be one of those situations, but there'd be a different one. The other step backward that I see in this is, I mean, this governing board definitely had prioritized professional development for our teachers, increasing that, and recognizing that throughout the year, having professional development rather than stacked at the beginning or stacked at the end was more beneficial. Obviously, it kind of takes, we take a step, we're holding on to the days, but we're taking a little step backwards as far as the ideal of having it throughout the year. And I guess I just, I mean, I understand the pros and cons of each one, but I'd like to challenge, you know, our staff and all of our educators to take a look at this calendar, hold on to the ideals that we were hoping for when we originally came up with this calendar, and, yes, somehow try and work out the priorities of our community as well, so.
And I agree with you. I'm a large proponent of staff development, professional development. We have seven half-days during the calendar year. My belief is, what I've heard from administrators and others, that we may not be using those days, those half-days, the best way that we can. And we may even be losing instructional time in the in-school portion of those half-days, and I believe there are ways to correct that. So regardless of what happens with the calendar, that's going to happen. We are going to talk about how we make those seven half-days, those release days, more effective, and the professional development that takes place in those half-days, something that adds to the effectiveness of our teachers. So we will be working on that, but that's kind of an aside, but...
And, well, and those were the issues that this board discussed when we did come up with eighteen nineteen calendar. You know, again, give and takes on both sides, so I, you know, we're not in an ideal situation, but moving forward, just like to hold on to some of those priorities. Board Member Kirby, did you have another question?
No, I just kind of want to explain how I'm going to go here. I just, I completely understand the Memorial Day challenge, I'm very empathetic to it, wanted to solve it, but I don't know if it's morally or ethically, I have a, it's hard for me to just, after this conversation, which has been videotaped, livestreamed, and will be memorialized, that we as a board knew that that was technically part of the one hundred and eighty days, and we also knew that we were going to look the other way. That just doesn't feel right to me. So I just wanted to share that as an explanation.
I understand that sentiment completely.
Board Member Hartman?
Thank you. I'm of the same mind on that level of discomfort, but what I'm wondering is a solution is, is the calculation of minutes a way to address that specifically for our twelfth graders on that particular day? So we'll have a hundred and seventy-nine days, but will the minute calculation exceed or equal to one eighty?
Yes, that was confirmed.
So I've just spent the last two days doing next year's instructional minutes for high school. At this time, we are still short in high school for being a true full FTE if you do one period equals a point two-five FTE. What this happens with our twelfth graders is they may come to three classes, and instead of getting a point seven-five, we're getting a point five for them. This affects our eleventh graders who go to EBIT, our students that do JTED classes, we are losing funding because we are not making the exact minutes that we need already. So if we take any time down, we're going to be hurt worse.
Okay, so I think this is getting even more complicated than it needs to. So I'm not talking about funding EBIT, we realize that's an issue, it's always been an issue. With respect to seniors that are taking three classes, I thought we addressed that well over a year ago, and it's like a handful of students that are in that situation.
It's quite a few students, I'll get you the numbers if you'd like, but it does, you are losing a point two-five on all these students.
Well, I guess I would be interested, because this was an issue two years ago, and I thought we fixed it.
Yeah, I agree, I thought we had seniors going to five periods.
Conflicting information right now.
No, the instructional minutes have never been enough minutes to equal that point two-five per period.
I understand that, that's a fact. However, I thought we addressed that well over a year ago by requiring students to take that fourth hour, and it went from hundreds to like ten, less than ten digits was, or a meeting from about a year ago.
We still have quite a few students that are taking less than a five, you have to have five to make a one-point-oh.
That's what I thought. Yeah, can I, can I jump? I think maybe, possibly, as we continue to investigate why there's a disconnect, we did provide exception rules where if a student was doing, had a job, and if a student was doing this, if they could bring in documentation, and we would grant an exception. So how easy is it for a student to come in and what's required for documentation to say, hey, I've got a job I have to go to? And then check, okay, see, you're gone. It's more of the compliance piece of this, and I bet we have gotten very, this is my guess, my guessing we've gotten a little bit lax.
Yes, it is an issue with the schools trying to get that documentation from them.
Board Member, oh, sorry. Board Member Beckham? I'll just weigh in that I also am uncomfortable approving something knowing that the students won't be there. I think that it does complicate it, and I think that we need to really look at this minutes with our high schoolers. I need to reconcile it with the calendar before I can vote on the calendar. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Well, I mean, I'm certainly not arguing, I have my issues with this revision. I know it was requested by the board to take another look at the original calendar that we had approved, trying to solve that issue, but again, I think we've recognized by solving that one issue, created other issues, and taken some steps backwards, and, I mean, I agree, it's not comfortable. I guess we could give this a try at this point. I mean, we have two choices, either we attempt to solve this graduation on Thursday night and Friday, having, it being a school day right now, or we have a motion to keep the original calendar that the governing board had approved. Because, I mean, we need, I mean, in my opinion, we need to solve this calendar issue now, it's the end of June, we can't wait any longer for our staff and families to know our school calendar in August, so. Oh, Board Member Kirby?
So thank you. So Ms. Siegel's back, so in an effort to move us along, I don't think it's a good idea for us to try to solve a calendar from the dais that our administrative team has taken many, many looks at over several hours, and at one point came to us with four different versions, they had taken such a hard look. And this was by far the best, the best version was version one, and it has fallen short. So I'm going to make a motion to retain the twenty eighteen nineteen calendar as it was originally drafted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Hartman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four one. Thank you all for this work. So sorry to go through all this, calendars are fun, we all know it. Thank you very much. All right, so now we do have Ms. Siegel, who has joined us. Thank you for coming back, and we'll move to agenda item ten, backup information discussion item, agenda item ten A, first read of revisions to policy GBEAA, staff conflict of interest.
Thank you, and I apologize to the board, Ms. Marshall and I had a little bit of failure communication. I feel that this is a scene from Ferris Bueller's Day Off when you were looking for me, so I will try to, I'll try to be brief. Do you have, can somebody put up GBEAA? Let me just give you the preamble, you had some challenges this last year that resulted not by your making, but in an indictment of an employee who did not disclose conflict of interest policy, or, I'm sorry, conflict of interest pursuant to your policy. I want to tell you that you are on the cutting edge of all the other school districts in Arizona by if you adopt this new and revised policy that Ms. Marshall and I have worked on in conjunction with ASBA leadership, as well as, we've showed it to persons in government agencies to see how they feel about it. You had a conflict of interest policy like everyone else had, pretty much, which was confusing. It did not define relative, you had to, an employee had to go look it up, and it did not really spell out what you're supposed to disclose and what you're not supposed to disclose. But that isn't just Scottsdale, unique to Scottsdale, that was the ASBA policy. So several, four intervening events happened. One, you had the incidents that occurred that resulted in an indictment of a former employee. Two, you had my report, the report of the auditor general, and the report of your own auditors that pointed out problems. Three, House Bill two six six three was changed, and, or, I'm sorry, causes changed to the conflict of interest policy for school districts. And four, I believe that the recommendations of the auditor general, which are in that report, need to be implemented. Now whether or not, let me just back up, Ms. Marshall and I have been meeting with ASBA leadership, they are looking to adopt a new template for policy GBEAA. Whether they go as far as we went, we don't know. We went as far as, we went a little bit farther because of the auditor general findings that were issued shortly after the former employee was indicted. The bottom line is that we don't believe that there is enough training or enough explanation to your employees as to what is a conflict of interest, what is a substantial interest, what they need to disclose. In addition, we also found that the, that it wasn't frequent enough. Not only did you not train, but you didn't require employees to rethink it at the beginning of each year or when they're first hired. So what we have implemented, or asked you to implement, is a new conflict of interest policy that defines make known, refrain from, defines relative in it. Of course, that's a reiteration of statute, you may say, Mrs. Siegel, why do we have to do it? Well, you know, exhibit A is what happened this last year. Substantial interest is defined. So the conflict of interest policy requires each and every employee and officer of the district to file a conflict of interest disclosure in the form, which is GBEAA dash E, we'll show that to you in a moment. And then, in addition to the, and that must be done annually, and it'll be done at the beginning of the year, and in addition, it must be filed if each, if an employee learns that they have a conflict within fifteen days after that. And failure to comply, of course, may result in discipline and to, up to and including termination of employment. There's also a separate section in there about employment of close relatives, where we further define what close relatives are. The concept will be that every employee upon hire will go through a mandatory training, whether it be through a webinar or online training or in person, as to what conflict of interest requires. You have historically not had that, and you just had in your hire documents, whether they're disclosure of outside employment, that's not the same thing, and so we need to educate on that. In addition, it also talks about once-a-year training and once-a-year disclosure, so you have to give, the employee has to sign off on this. Every employee has to sign off on this, even if they do not have a conflict, and that is in the form, and I don't know whether IT can do their usual magic and pull up the exhibit, but at the recommendation of the auditor, which was also one of the recommendations I believe we made earlier, and that is that even if the employee has no conflict, they have to state they have no conflict. Now I understand, because I've been a school district administrator and a school teacher...
This one is the policy, this one is the form.
Okay, and so I do it that way?
Just click on the tab at the top.
That's the policy?
And that's the form.
Okay. I understand that there are going to be questions the first time, everybody's going to raise their hand and say, what's a relative? And, you know, my uncle owns a Staples store or something like that, a supply store... And, you know, my uncle owns a Staples store, or something like that, supply store. We're going to have to get people used to this, and people are going to have to be trained. But once you do that hurdle, you're going to be able to follow through. Now, this policy does not technically apply to you as board members. That would go, we'd have a similar policy in Section B. That's not what we're presenting tonight, but it would be a similar policy where you will have to, every year, disclose if you have a conflict. I'm available if you have any questions. Now, an exhibit is not necessarily required to be approved by you. This is the form, and as you can see, they have to disclose a conflict within fifteen calendar days, and they have to submit it to both District Legal and Human Resources Departments. Human Resources will keep it in the employee's file. Legal will keep a file on, available for the members of the public, and as transparent of a process as possible to come in and see who has what types of conflicts. So this is the, you can see, this is identify the contract, sale, purchase, or decision, case investigation. And by the way, at my, at Ms. Marshall's recommendation and mine as well, we decided to copy the one that's in the Attorney General Handbook. I have, I have suggestions for the Attorney General as well as to how they can improve, but we decided to copy it as closely as possible. So they're to identify the relative if applicable. They're to describe the substantial interest, and they're going, they're supposed to understand and affirmatively state that they're going to avoid any possible conflict of interest by refraining from in any manner participating. And this is a statement of no conflict. This no-conflict statement was made at the, was a recommendation of the Auditor General, and I wholly concur. Now, I'll go back to the policy. Again, the salient facts are training and signing off once a year. Now, whether you have the training once a year is somewhat optional for continuing employees, because we don't want to have too much training, but that's one thing that administration has to decide. Once people have been trained, they still have to sign off once a year. Any questions?
Board Member Kravitz?
Because we've had an issue with these forms and who held them, et cetera, when one of our employees signs these forms, does it first go to HR, and is it HR's responsibility to give them to Legal, or do they first go to Legal, and then it's Legal's responsibility to give it to HR?
It's not going to pass down. It's a dual, it's a dual submission. One goes to Legal, and it's kept in a common file of all conflicts.
Right.
The other one goes in that employee's personnel file. So you have a check and balance.
So they're signing two forms? I mean, I know I'm getting very particular, but I could envision where this form is in either HR's file, but not in Legal's, or in Legal's file, Legal has it and not HR, and somebody's saying, oh, we don't have it down the road, and we have some issue. So I'm just trying to figure out who has the ultimate responsibility to making sure that there are checks and balances, so to speak, or that both of these departments have these forms?
I would say Legal does.
Okay, thank you.
And I would, whether you have two copies of, have the employee sign two originals?
Yeah.
Or you have signed copies, will have a distribution sheet, a checklist, that says this one's gone to the file, this one's gone to Legal, and that's where they are.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Board Member Kirby?
Thank you. So tonight, we have our first read. I'm assuming this will come back in August as, for approval. Do staff have envisioned expectation on when that training would be provided and the rollout occur?
I believe Ms. Marshall does have a training, or has it all envisioned, but we'll share it with you. Of course, I think this is one thing that we need to talk to your new HR Assistant Superintendent about, but we're not going to stall on it. We're going to move forward.
Okay.
This is really crucial, and it's really nice that you're providing a model. ASBA has, has asked us for a copy of this model, and of course, if they don't want to use it, they can't, you know, they might not, but I think that they are going to.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Board Member Beckham?
Thank you. I just want to follow up with Board Member Kravitz. Part of the issue that we had is it did go to HR, but it's the responsibility of HR to read it and know what was expected, and then to go back and ask for further information. So will it be both HR and Legal's responsibility, both of them, to read them, and if they aren't completed to the satisfaction that they're supposed to be, they both are, it's, they're both either or, their responsibility then to ask the employee to fill it out correctly? Or are we going to kind of go to what Board Member Kravitz alluded to? HR's going to think it's Legal's responsibility, and Legal's going to think it's HR's? So is there a procedure that is going to be in place?
Yes, we need to put a procedure in place that says, and I'll talk to Ms. Marshall about how we would do that. Maybe it could be a regulation by the Superintendent that basically says you have two sets of eyes. You have HR, and you have Legal, and you can't pass a buck. Both of you have the responsibility to double-check. If you recall, in the instance that we had last, that we investigated, that I investigated last spring, it didn't in any way, shape, or form describe the conflict. It just says, I have a conflict. Doesn't say with who, or how come, or why, or where. Now, I'm not excusing the fact that the person did not fully disclose, because I believe that, and the Attorney General believes that that person should have, but we're making it abundantly clear right there, so they don't have to go back to the statutes or your, your policy book to read. They'll, they'll know what a relative is. And I have even drawn a family tree, if you ever want to see it, that will allow people to figure out what a relative is in this case.
Board Member Hartman?
Two comments. First, Ms. Siegel, I just wanted to thank your work and Ms. Marshall's work on this.
Thank you.
It's responsive. It meets and exceeds our expectations. It's a best practice, so thank you. This was important to me as a board member. I'm sure I'm speaking for our board overall. Secondly, just because we're on this workflow concept, do we, and this is probably an HR question, so I don't know if Dr. Chestnut can answer this, but do we have just a workflow tool? Because these types of HR documents typically can be automated, even with an automated signature, so that there's an actual electronic file as opposed to paper files, to avoid these challenges that we're, you know, board members are discussing?
Dr. Chestnut can take the stand here.
You know, I haven't been closely involved with this, but I do know that in planning stages, we are talking about a digital format for this form, so that would address that issue.
That would be advisable.
Yes.
This and other forms.
And that would be part of the checkoff when you're first hired.
Right.
And then, the only glitch is if you're still trained once a year, and you're first hired, you've got that training, and then all of a sudden, it turns up that your uncle is going to sell school supplies to your district. And you understand that a familial relationship isn't necessarily always a conflict of interest. For example, your uncle can sell supplies to the school district, but unless you are in the decision tree of making the decision to use that, your uncle's company, it's not a conflict.
That makes sense. Any other questions or comments? I just echo Board Member Hartman's sentiments. This is very important and critical improvement in our practices, our procedures. Appreciate the thorough and thoughtful work that you and Ms. Marshall and our HR Department have done. You know, each and every day, we get a little bit better, and this is a big step towards that.
You're on the leading edge, on the cutting edge of this one, and it's, you ought to be happy.
Yeah, we're on the cutting edge of everything.
We're on the good cutting edge.
But thank you very much.
All right.
Right. And I do believe, yes, Dr. Pierre will be seeing this, but probably at a regular meeting in August, a second read, is that?
And I believe Ms. Marshall will be presenting that.
Ms. Marshall will be presenting that. Terrific. Thank you for coming back, Ms. Siegel. Okay, so as we noted, we're tabling Action Item Thirteen-B, which moves us then to our Agenda Item Fourteen, Future Items. Do I have any additional requests for future Agenda Items from board members? Board Member Hartman?
Yes, thank you. I have two items. What I would like to request, and Dr. Kreekert and I spoke a little bit about this, but I would be interested in an analysis of our two thousand seventeen, eighteen AZ Merit results, and with some specificity in terms of, we looked at a document, but what does that look like from a trend perspective? So multiple years, what does that look like from a K-12 perspective within learning communities? And really be able to understand where the aberrations are, both greater than our district standards and less than. And if we can do that in early August, I think that would be important, since that would be part of our important conversations going forward. And then, secondly, I would like to request a special meeting for the update of our strategic plan, as well as annual goal-setting for the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen. Also, late summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Kravitz?
I would like to add a review of stipends for our extracurricular activities. I know I brought this up before, but some other pressing issues came up, but, so I would really like to take a look at that, because I do believe that there are some activities where some of our teachers are not getting paid for assisting, and I won't mention any in particular, but you know what they are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Board Member Kirby?
Thank you. Also, in the fall, not too late in the fall, I would like a conversation, please, on school consolidations.
All right. We're going to have a busy fall. Board Member Beckham?
Thank you. I'd like to support what Board Member Hartman had mentioned, the analysis of the Arizona merits and the special meeting for strategic plan and goal planning. And then I'd also like to add an analysis of graduation rates, and possibly, I don't know if I really want to say two sets, but I know that we send one set to the Department of Education, but I'm really concerned with also looking at what the high schools work on during that senior year, and those seniors that don't actually graduate, and looking at the interventions that we provide, to seeing if they're successful or not. So it's not just that long range of who started freshman year and who ended senior year, those numbers. It's really the actual kids in senior years, and how many kids don't graduate.
Okay. And Board Member Hartman, did you have additional?
I did. One additional comment. When we look at school consolidation, I also would like to add the context of what enrollment forecasts. I believe that information needs to be updated, and we can't have one conversation without the other. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. All right. No other items, then we'll move on to Agenda Item Fifteen, Dates of Upcoming Meetings. We have added a special meeting executive session to June twenty-eighth at three P.M., and that will be at the Mojave District Annex. Our next study session will be on Thursday, August ninth, two thousand eighteen, at three P.M., also at the Mojave District Annex, and a regular governing board meeting will be held Tuesday, August fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, at five P.M. here at Coronado. Move on then to Agenda Item Sixteen, Governing Board Reports. Do we have any governing board reports this evening? Board Member Hartman?
Thank you. I do not have a governing board report, but I would like just to acknowledge that it's been a challenging year here at SUSD in many ways, and I really wanted to thank the teachers, our educators, our administrators, our leadership, our classified staff, who through the process stayed focused on what our true mission is here in our district, which is to educate every student to their highest potential, and it's well-recognized and appreciated, so thank you for that continued focus in making SUSD an outstanding school district. So thanks.
Thank you. Any other, other reports? No? All right, I'll echo the sentiments. Seventeen eighteen has been one for the, for the record books, but we survived it all, and I know we are stronger and getting stronger each day for it. So thank you all, our staff, our community, that just got us through it and kept students learning. So thank you all. Have a wonderful July. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Hartman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five-zero. Have a great evening, everyone.